Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon, and welcome to your City Council informational meeting. It is Tuesday, December 4th. Call this meeting to order. First item is Land Use Committee Meeting Update.
Let me dig out my minutes. Thank you very much. Our meeting was November 20th, and we basically, the whole time, was reviewing the engineering design standards that were presented by Mr. Chad Heavy and Wes Phillips, Nick Borns and Lance Weatherly. And it was not quite the 60 minutes that they said it was going to be, but nevertheless, it was a good update on changes, proposed changes to the engineering design standards.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions? We'll move to the next item. The Administration Communications is, we're going to skip over that today. There is not an update for that. So the next item is City Council Open Discussion. Is there anyone that has City Council Open Discussion? I have one, one brief thing I wanted to bring up today. I did not intend to have a full-blown informational on this, but I just got this back. Wanted to give just an update to this council and let you know that you'll see an ordinance coming early January. It was brought to my attention by a constituent that had some questions in regards to drones. As we started digging in and diving in, we found that really we're out of compliance with the potential of being sued, that the FAA does regulate drones and drone activity. And so, the ordinance that we have onboard essentially is going to be repealed. Don Kearney, Director Don Kearney with the Parks Board will be bringing this forward to the Parks Department on December 18th, just for their consideration, since they do preempt the council. And then we'll have a first and second reading come January, early January time. So, just wanted to get it in front of you as early as possible. Nothing too crazy about it. It's really just essentially repealing an ordinance that is out of compliance, and wanted to bring that up today. Thanks, Jim, for putting that on the screen for us. Any other open discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our first presentation, e-bikes, with Kelby Kamana.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. Here this afternoon to visit with you about some ordinance revisions that would introduce Class 1 e-bikes to sidewalks in our bike trail system. And at this time, I'd like to thank Sam Trebelcock and Keith Allenstein for their help in putting these ordinance revisions together. And throughout this entire process, they've been very instrumental in getting us to this point. So, to provide some background for you as to how we got to where we're at today, currently, e-bikes are not allowed on the bike trail system. They are not allowed on city sidewalks. They are not allowed to be used in our bike lanes or cycle tracks. They are allowed to be on city streets. They are considered motorized vehicles, yet unregulated vehicles by state statute. Earlier this year, representatives from Parks and Recreation, Police Department, the City Attorney's Office, and Planning met with a group of bike trail users that would like to see ordinance changes and revisions that would allow the use of e-bikes on our bike trail system and on city sidewalks. So, through a lot of research that we have done, participating in a People for Bikes webinar, visiting with the city of Boise, Idaho, the city of Rapid City, reading through posts on the National Recreation Association forum from other communities across the country who have dealt with the e-bike, e-bikes on their bike trail system and within their communities. It's been one of those situations where I personally have, have learned a lot. It's been a very good educational process for me. So, I believe that the ordinance revisions that we have for you to consider here in the coming weeks would be a great first step for Sioux Falls. I do also want to make sure that you are aware that we have heard from other bike trail users that have expressed concern over allowing e-bikes or other motorized vehicles on the bike trail system. Now, as you know, our recreational trail system is a multi-use trail system. You're going to find walkers and runners, people walking dogs, kids, kids learning to ride bikes, along with bicycles and, in the future, Class 1 e-bikes. In November, we did meet with the Bike Committee and had a great discussion at the library that Monday night, and talked through, centered our conversation around, at that point, our proposal would not have allowed e-bikes on city sidewalks. Through the conversation and through suggestions that they had for us, it really does make a lot of sense for us to allow them on, on sidewalks. We do allow bicycles on sidewalks. So, allowing the Class 1 e-bike on sidewalks as well was something that we, we thought, especially in certain parts of town, it just simply made sense that we should, we should allow the sidewalks to be included in, in these ordinance revisions. The recommendations were approved unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Board in November. They are aware of all of the ordinance changes, because the ordinance changes and revisions touch a lot of different chapters throughout the Code of Ordinances. However, the Parks and Recreation Board focused on the changes and updates to Chapter 95. So, as I mentioned, some of the research that we have, we have done, what are some of the other communities doing across the country? And through the webinar, we learned that e-bike legislation has been passed at the state level in 10 different states. And there are other states where they anticipate consideration of those same e-bike legislation language being adopted in other states in 2019. There is a federal code that includes definitions for e-bikes. This is essentially where we pulled the definition for Class 1 e-bikes and the ordinance changes that we are proposing. But the three classes are essentially a Class 1 e-bike, which is a pedal-assist e-bike, that would assist a rider up to 20 miles an hour. Once the rider gets beyond 20 miles an hour, the pedal assist is no longer, is no longer there. That is, this class of e-bike is the one that we are recommending. Class 2 e-bike is a throttle assist, which would allow the rider to travel up to 20 miles an hour without pedaling. Of course, once the bike goes beyond the 20 miles an hour, that assist, of course, is no longer there. And a Class 3 is a pedal-assist e-bike that would assist a rider up to 28 miles an hour. So, again, our, our proposal for the changes and recommendations to our ordinances would be the Class 1 e-bike only. So, some of these proposed changes would be to define the e-bike, would define the e-bike as a, the Class 1 e-bike pedal-assist, up to 20 miles an hour. Would define a cycle track. A cycle track is a, a bike and pedestrian corridor that we currently have on the west side of town, on West Maple Street. This would, would place the definition of this cycle track into our city ordinance, and then would allow the use of that cycle track for bicycles and Class 1 e-bikes. Would, of course, allow e-bike, Class 1 e-bike access to the bike trail system, cycle tracks, and city sidewalks. The Class 1 was chosen mainly for the health and wellness initiatives that we have, especially through Parks and Recreation. Our recreational trail system is for fitness and recreation. It was the original intent, and we definitely want to make sure that we maintain that, that original intent of the trail system for recreation and fitness. And we feel that the pedal assist would be the, would be a good first step. It does provide exclusive use for bicycle lanes, for the use of bicycles and e-bikes. As I've mentioned before, currently, e-bikes are not allowed on our bike lanes on city streets. Only the bicycles are. This would allow Class 1 e-bikes and bicycles to have the exclusive use of those bike lanes. Would also provide the same allowances and requirements for bicycles and Class 1 e-bikes. This is essentially the, the rules of the road, so to speak, for bicycles, on how they pass, and how they yield to traffic at intersections. And also, in an update, or a change in the ordinance, would be that bicycles and e-bikes would yield to pedestrians on sidewalks, similar to what is essentially standard procedure on our, our single tracks. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Sam Trebelcock, and he'll visit about some of the pavement markings, things we have in Sioux Falls.
Thanks, Kelby. One of the things that we noticed is, Keith was put in drafting this ordinance, is there were some other things that we thought would work well in updating and clarifying ordinance language. Certainly, the bicycle lanes are one aspect. Current ordinance really doesn't specifically delineate that that is only for bicycles, let alone e-bicycles. So, this ordinance also does that and clarifies that. And I think that's important, and we're showing here what a bicycle lane looks like. You'll see those in various places around the community. It is certainly just for the bicycle or the e-bicycle. Now, that, it also does, does allow for driveways or street corners, other places, that the driveways, the car can go through the bicycle lane, but it should not be traveling within. So, I think that's a, a good clarification as a part of this. Another one is, is a cycle track. And you only see one of these in town right now, but we would anticipate that, that there could be more. And certainly, we want to make sure that these are a part of ordinance and clarified, too. This one is along Maple Street, near southeast Technical Institute area. And you can see just by the sign that on the left side of this cycle track, the, that's, that's where the cycle track is located, and that's where the bicycles will ride, and then the pedestrians are on, in the right side. And the, again, the exclusive use should be for the bicycle, then it should be reflected in ordinance, and that is clarified here. So, just to also bring this forward, sometimes this is confusing. We wanted to also mention this, too, as a part of this. There are other facilities out there that you'll see, and not to confuse them with a bicycle lane or a cycle track. So, you'll also see the parking lane on Bonson or other places within the city. The parking lane is just delineating that area where people can park. You can see on this street here, this happens to be on Bonson. You see somebody parking in that area. That is not for the exclusive use of bicycles. But a lot of time, the bicyclist might use it when available, when somebody isn't parking there to, to bicycle. But a lot of times, they'll still be in that middle lane. You'll also see on the right, the sharrows. Those sharrows, again, that really means you can share the lane in that area, share the lane, the cars and the bicycle. Again, that's not to be confused with the bicycle lane or, or, or the parking lane. Bicycles, again, have the same rules and responsibilities as motorists do on the roadway. They need to be stopping at the stop signs, but they also need to be afforded the same, the same rules, the same accommodations that any other vehicle is, is allowed. So, bicycles may use the full lane when needed. Typically, if there's enough room, they can, they'll be moving to the right. But when they don't have that room for somebody to pass them in the lane, they can use that full lane. And that also, as part of ordinances, we think it's important to note, too, that the vehicles, motor vehicles should be passing, giving a three-foot passing distance along the roadways. That's an important thing for us to be looking at throughout this entire process. With that, I'll turn it back over to Kelby.
So, just a, a few other items in the ordinance changes and revisions. One, there is a definition of recreation trail that lives in our current ordinances, just not in Chapter 95, which is the Parks and Recreation chapter. We would simply mirror and bring this definition from the other place in ordinance and put it into Chapter 95. And as I mentioned earlier, going through, and Sam mentioned it, too, was we were going through and looking at all the places in ordinance that we would need to, to change and revise and update to allow for the Class 1 e-bikes and the different changes. We also found a few things that we figured we should clean up while we were here. One of those is pedestrian movements that control the intersections. Now, this is, is really kind of a housekeeping item. Since we're changing so many places in ordinance, we figured this would be a good time. Essentially, this, the changes would reflect the safety measures that are currently in place that signal the intersections for pedestrians. One of the best examples I have of this is the intersections of 10th and 11th in Minnesota, where we have the pedestrian lead interval, where the walk light turns for pedestrians to begin traffic, but the red light for turning traffic remains red to give the pedestrians a head start. The changes proposed in the ordinance would, would simply put these current practices in concert with city ordinance. We believe that, that all of these changes and revisions through ordinance would be a good first step. That Class 1 e-bike allowance on, on bike trails, on sidewalks, in the bike lanes, and on cycle tracks would be a good first step and provide, we could provide, then, a status update on the success of these changes next year, after we've, we've had a chance to live it for a year. This is a, a very big step for us in allowing an assist method, item on the bike trail. We have not done this before. So, this is definitely a step that we haven't taken lightly, which would be why it's taken so many months from the original conversation to get us to this point. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll turn over the council, Counselor Naitzert.
I, I just want to say when, we, as a council, had received an email from Chad at Spoken Sport, and he had invited us to come over if we'd like. And, and I did. And I was able to ride a Class 1 e-bike and check out the other ones. And it was a very good learning experience. There was a lot of misconceptions. And I, I had approached the administration and said, hey, I'm kind of, this looks really interesting, and I'd like to look into it. And they said, well, we're already working on it. So, I was able to just kind of jump in and sit in on a couple of their meetings, just kind of see what was going on. And I, I will tell you that one of the things that we are already being contacted about is this, the Class 2 e-bike issue, which is the one that has the throttle. And there's some very good points on both sides. I will tell you that there was spirited discussion about that, and there's definite pros and cons to it. And I know one of the things that you think about, and, and I don't know exactly where we'll come down on this, but one of the issues is, if you do allow these, which is just a throttle, and it doesn't, you know, most people are not going to just use a throttle. They're going to pedal, and they're going to use it as an assist. But it does open up the gate of, if you're going to say that you can use something with a throttle that is a bike, then how do you say no to a Segway? How do you say no to little motorized, you know, scooters and all of these different things? And so, there's, but there's people that have very good points on the side of allowing the Class 2. And then there are people that have given us some very good input about preserving what the bike trail was before, and are even kind of uncomfortable with just e-bikes in general. So, there's really good points on both sides. And so, this is something that we're going to have to, have to wrestle with, whether to take the conservative approach, because you can always come back, or which way to go with it. But you do start to talk about opening a Pandora's Box, in a way. And so, I think that's something we have to struggle with. I'm not advocating either way at this point. I'm just saying, that's kind of what the wrestle was, was trying to figure out what that, what that part was. So, I just wanted to, to share that. But I'm very excited as coming forward. I was able to, to, when I was able to ride one, I was able to see that there's a lot of things where if you're maybe, you know, you can't keep up with a spouse, or you're having, you're starting to get maybe a little older, or you're having some sort of, you know, physical issues, this is going to allow you to be able to continue to be active. And, you know, and so, it's really a great thing where we're kind of catching up with, with technology. So, in general, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Maris, tell us, what was the Parks Department's, or not the Park, the Parks Board's reasoning, and maybe your reasoning to exclude Class 2? If that was, was it just because that the Class 1 was a good place to start and take a look at what we were doing? Or what was the, the decision-making process as you came forward with this recommendation?
Yeah, exactly. We, we definitely like to, to walk before we run. So, Class 1 is a, is a great step. And also, that Class 1 forces the user to recreate. So, while they're using the recreation trail, they have to pedal before they get any assist. To, to mirror some of the, the comments made by Counselor Naitzert, it's, there's also that, that fine line between other things, where it have a throttle or a button that'll, that'll help it go. And, and we just, we really feel like the, the recreational component, especially on the recreation trail, that the Class 1 is the place for us to start.
But you probably don't ever see us get into maybe including the Class 3, then?
Well, no. One of the, the biggest complaints that we have on the bike trail is speed. So, you know, allowing something that we fully are aware that would, you know, has the capability of 28 miles an hour, and I'm fully aware that road bikes have greater capabilities than that as well, and just not with me on it. But, so, yeah, I don't really, at this point in the conversation, I don't see us entertaining a Class 3. Thank you.
Counselor Staley.
A few, a few questions here. It would be helpful if we had the handout with us, as I'm taking, because I'm going to reference back. But it's nice when we usually have something and we can have it.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for that.
That's okay. But when we bring that back again, we'll have it, right, for the first reading?
Absolutely.
So, a few, few questions. I will say to the biking community that Counselor Naitzert was, was your heralding prophet here, because he did come out, and he sent us emails and told us about how his, positive his experience was. So, I appreciate that very much. Question about the no cycle track streets. And so, if we get, and I don't know how we're going to reference bringing that, what slide was that on? It was talking about a street where that you don't have the cycle tracks. So, then, how, that, that's the instance where they're going to be just a regular street, right? They're going to be mixing into the flow of traffic?
Correct.
Where we, okay. Is, is the goal in our city of Sioux Falls going to be to have more of these markings on our streets, or is that a limitation we have?
So, I, again, Counselor Staley, just one more time, if you could. You're asking whether or not we're going to have more of these kind of markings, like the parking lane or the sharrows?
The cycle track is the thing on the side, right?
Yeah. So, okay, going back to the cycle track, you're wondering if we might have more of these?
So, is, is this, okay, excuse me. So, the cycle track was that sidewalk. Okay, so that was, I didn't have it to write on the page. So, yeah, this question about this, is, is this a sidewalk?
The sidewalk is on the right side. You see where the dotted, where the dash line is, is on the right side of it.
So, this, you said this was on Madison?
On Maple.
Maple. So, are we going to be mandating this kind of a width thing on new development areas for sidewalks, for residential?
Really, this happens, in this particular instance, when we did this. This is going to happen when the street and the right-of-way can accommodate it. In this particular instance, the city is maintaining this, and I'm, yep, looking over at Shannon. So, the city maintains that street. So, you wouldn't have those situations where you're going to have the extra-wide sidewalks here, which are the cycle tracks in this particular case, maintained by the.
Like a design, it's not going to come back as a design standard for new development?
No, not particularly. Again, if this makes sense in, in, on certain street segments, where we see that there's a lot of needs for, for bicycling traffic, like we had out in this area, as we're starting to head towards the schools, then we can make it work within that right-of-way. So, in this particular case, we can make it work.
How, how wide is that sidewalk?
What is it, about 10, 10 feet, I think? 10 feet?
Yeah. So, by only, nothing against the bicyclist community, but I, I would, would not want to put a hardship on residential areas where we might be saying, you're going to have to put a 10-foot sidewalk.
No. And that's why the city took maintenance of that, knowing that that would be, yeah. So, that would be kind of generally a part of that.
Okay. So, the next thing I was just going to clarify is, you said you're going to have something that's going to say you have to yield to pedestrians on sidewalks. So, right now, that is the, the rule?
That is the current rule for bicycles on the sidewalk.
You just want that immortalized in an ordinance? Is that what?
No. What, what happens is, is the same thing will be for e-bikes when they're on the sidewalk. They'll, they'll, they'll have to follow that.
But is that going to be written, is that written in an ordinance?
That is already written.
Okay. So, that.
Just, what we're doing here is just providing that for e-bicycles also.
Okay, excellent. And then, the bike lane, you made a reference that, that bike lanes are only going to be for these certain vehicles. Are there, what other entities are trying to use a bike lane now?
Well, in some cases, I suppose the, the motor vehicle could. And that's what we'd be worried about. Because in this particular case, the bike lane, you're trying to dedicate specifically for the bicycle, to give them a little more protection from traffic, especially on the busier roads.
Do these bikes make any kind of noise? Or they, they sound like a, just a regular, they're not like a motorcycle?
You wouldn't notice them at all.
And, okay, just two more things. I'm noticing on some streets, I think there was an, and this isn't necessarily bike-related, but wasn't there a philosophy that if you don't have center lines, that people are going to go slower? If, if there's not a center line, the less markings you have, the more it's going to force people to slow down and think about things. Is that, is that, am I right in that?
That's the parking lane philosophy. A lot of it is done, in, in a lot of cases, to calm traffic. You'll see a lot of these for that purpose. Because what it's doing is, it's really sending traffic into a narrower lane to travel.
But it seems to me out there, there's some roads around McKenon that they don't have a center lane. It's, it's, yeah, there's no center marking. It's those two-side thing, or a sided thing, and there's nothing in the center. So, you're going to, you kind of have to, I thought that was done to make people have to think of, well, who's coming over?
There's one kind of street like that on the west side of town. I think it's on Ninth Street. And we've worked on that, where it is a bicycle combined travel lane. It's very narrow, that probably doesn't have the center turn lane, or the center striping lane.
I thought that on Seventh Avenue, I thought there was one. Okay.
Collectors. You don't see them on local streets, anyway, so.
And then, the last question is, is there a speed limit on the bike trail right now?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Does our bike trail have a speed limit?
Yes. 15 miles an hour.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council, comments, statements? Okay. Thank you very much. We will move to our next presentations. We do public input at the end of these meetings, so hang tight if you'd like to address. We welcome your input here shortly. Our, our next presentation is Council Staff Personnel Management. I'm going to start, and then I'm going to pass it to Counselor Greg Naitzert, just to give a little bit of background. We do an annual pay resolution for our staff. This is really an internal conversation, but we wanted to have this here for all of us to hear at the exact same time. We do an internal resolution for our staff that will be coming up next week. Upon that, we also, through the changes in audit, Seagull Waters did a study on our audit staff, where we fell in line for pay, and if we are keeping up with market pace. And with that came some proposed changes in how that impacts our staff. I know we've had these conversations before, but we want to just go over it, go over the presentation. We have been in consultation with HR. I started this through being vice chair and moving through, and Greg is the Chair of Operation, or, I'm sorry, the Chair of Audit, and why he and I were kind of leading the charge on this particular topic. And so, with that, we have a presentation. All of you should have that in front of you, as well as on the screen. And I will turn it over to Counselor Naitzert, Director Bill Tools here as well, to answer an additional questions, should you have any. So, take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, we're all familiar with the council staff positions. These that I have here on the next slide are the positions that we have authorized. This is not, obviously, all full at this time. We have a city clerk, two assistant city clerks, the ops manager, budget analyst, the internal audit manager, and we have two internal auditors, if we're at full strength. Every year, we adopt a COLA. This is done every year, just to give our, our staff the cost of living increase that the administration side gets. We would be doing this no matter what. That proposed resolution adjusts the minimum and maximum pay ranges. That proposed resolution adjusts the minimum and maximum pay ranges for all of our council staff, and then they get that as part of their actual salary, a bump, at the same time that the rest of the administration does. And that COLA this year is 2.5%, and that will be reflected in this resolution. Council staff pay ranges. We adopt minimum and maximum pay ranges for each position by resolution. Those ranges are determined in consultation with Human Resources. There is that compensation and benefits study that we got back in April of 2018. One of those positions identified to get looked at was the internal auditor position. There was a feeling that it was probably low. That came back and confirmed that it was low. And this is a market analysis. It has nothing to do with merit, it has nothing to do with the person. It simply, are these positions market competitive? And it was found that the internal audit, auditor position was not market competitive, and it needed to be moved up. Now, when we do that and make that correction, we also have to deal with basically everything up the chain. If you move up the internal auditor's pay range, you have to deal with the manager, because obviously you need to maintain a spread. The, if we did nothing, the internal auditor, if we just bumped the internal auditor, they would be making the same amount as their manager, and that obviously is not going to work. So the internal audit manager range needs to bump up a little bit. And then when the council originally came up with this particular setup, they were very deliberative, and they had a, basically a hierarchy where the internal auditor reported to the internal audit manager. And it was also factored in that they wanted that city clerk to be at a different tier than the internal audit manager, and then the council operations manager to be one tier above that. So all of that cascades. Again, these are all market-based changes. So the minimum and maximum salaries would bump a little bit based on that market analysis and that. The next thing that we were bringing forward is a proposal to adopt a step system. This would mirror what the city of Sioux Falls does on the administration side. We would be adopting it by resolution, so we have control over this. This would have steps 1 through 5. You would progress through every 12 months, 6 through 9 every 24 months, just like the administration. It's assumed that you will get a step contingent on satisfactory performance. The big thing for us in where we're unique is that you literally have cases where we have some of our staff who will have a new boss every year. And that is very unique. And the problem that comes with that is that it can create some, things can be a little bit different one year to another, where you have a different, a different boss who might have an idea that, you know, what percentage raise that you might get, because we have guidance, but we don't have steps. So there's latitude there. This really will create continuity and consistency for the staff as counselors and chairs turn over. It sets forth a fixed and steady pay increase through the steps for minimum to maximum salary ranges. And it will help to prevent premature top-out of staff salaries, because we can get in that position where somebody tops out too early, and then you really have nothing that you can, you know, you can offer them, as far as being able to award merits and performance. You're just stuck with the COLA, and we can get, and we have gotten in that position before. The proposed resolution would come forward next week, December 11th, and we would be happy to stand by for any questions. And I would just want to reiterate, this is a market analysis and a market adjustment. It has nothing to do with the people involved. It's about staying competitive in the market and making those adjustments. And this is the same methodology that the administration side is using for the positions that they have to move. So I want to thank Human Resources for helping us with that, because that is not our wheelhouse. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Are there any questions? Councilor Staley.
Actually, I've got a few comments to make. And, you know, before I got on the council, I wasn't really aware of what kind of employee situation the council had. And we have to always remember that, you know, we have the employees that you saw listed on the beginning here. These employees are being paid by the taxpayers. They're not, they're not being paid by the council. They're being paid by you, the people. And because of that, I think we constantly, and we have to do this as elected officials too, we have to be letting the public know, what are you getting for your value? What are you getting for your dollar? I will say that we have some wonderful staff within the city council, and I call them the support staff, because we're part-time here. We all, most of us have other jobs, and we're trying to do the best we can to vet things out, to represent the citizens. So we rely on our staff to help us present the information we need, to research the information, to fill in the gaps. So I, I'm happy to pay a substantial, reasonable wage to our employees. But there again, I think we always have to be saying to the employees, and I have said this to them, when we give them evaluations, you have to be letting us know what you, help us to tell the public what you're doing for them. You're doing it for us, but we're doing it at the end for you, the citizens. So I'm supporting this, but again, I want the public to understand, there's an accountability piece to this as well.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to the public input portion of the meeting. If you would like to address the council on any of the topics that were on today, please step up to the mic, state your name, and you have five minutes. You might want to just pull both, yep, both down, but away. Yep, that's perfect. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jody Erickson, and I'm actually a Class 2 e-bike owner. And I wanted to come today, because I truly want to say thank you to these three gentlemen, Kelby, Keith, and Sam, because they have really done a lot of good work. Because actually, e-bikes are not a new thing. It's something that's been around for 2000, since 2000, and they're definitely coming into a surge more nationally and more locally. Currently, e-bikes are the fastest-growing category here in the United States with our bike vendors, is what I'm hearing. And part of it is because of the baby boomers. And that's how I got introduced, because my mom, who's sitting over there, she's the one that introduced me to an e-bike. And a couple of things that we've talked about is, usually when e-bikes are mentioned, everybody thinks speed instantly. But I want you to think now, e-bikes equals pedal assist, because that's exactly what the e-bikes do. So I want to just do a couple of common things, like it was mentioned about the speed limit. Usually, we think, if we do a comparison with a car, when you buy a car, it goes from zero to whatever, 140. Usually, that's kind of the analogy. But if you do that also with a bike, where it keeps being mentioned that with a bike going 20 miles an hour, that does tend to scare some people. And I kind of wanted to talk tonight about where we're really wanting with the first step that he had mentioned, to also include Class 1 and Class 2 at the same time, and for a couple of reasons. Class 1 and Class 2 will be introduced to our state's 2019 legislation. We're working with a group there. Class 1 and Class 2 will be identified as bicycles and regulated as such. Class 3 shall not be ridden on the bicycle multi-path lanes, as that's, as we are talking today, that is not being mentioned. And one thing that we want to do, to mention today, is, the reason why we want Class 2 mentioned is because it adds consistency among state laws to help with the consumer standpoint. It can get confusing to people when they buy a product, if a certain rule applies in one state and one doesn't in the other. And Class 2 e-bikes are allowed on shared infrastructure in nine of the 10 states that he had mentioned, that have been codified in the three-tier system. The other desire that we have is, for the Class 2 e-biker, is actually similar, like a Class 1 e-bike. The average speeds are quite similar, and people wish to ride them where you would just ride a normal bike or an e-bike, as we're defining here today. And it has been mentioned about the throttle as to being a concern. And usually, if you have a Class 2 bike, it does have a throttle. Unfortunately, my true bike that's outside won't fit underneath here, so I can't show you. But what a throttle does is, it mainly helps you assist at the start. And, you know, I have talked to a few people, as they would say, you know, well, could you throttle the whole ride if you did? And I got to thinking that sometimes on products, you have that little sticker that says, only use the product as intended. And a Class 2 throttle-assist bike, I don't think was ever intended just to sit there and use it nonstop. And so the throttle is used just to assist when you're at a dead stop, to help you get going at certain situations. So with the Class 1 and Class 2, the reason why, just want to really, as he had mentioned, they're going to maybe look at it in maybe a year to come. And it's a good step, but we're also asking a good step to have Class 1 and Class 2 to be on the bike trail and also on the sidewalk.
Thank you, Jody. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Please step forward. And we're under a little bit of a tight timeframe, so if anybody else would like to speak, you don't have to run. But if anybody else would like to speak, come on up and be prepared. Thank you.
I am Chad, and I own Spoken Sport here in Sioux Falls. One thing I wanted to talk about is, one of the things I wanted to bring up was that the definition of e-bikes is missing out on a couple of things, and it's, one specifically is, it talks about trikes with one wheel in front and two wheels in back, and it also needs to talk about bikes with two wheels in front and one wheel in back. That's just kind of a technical thing. Secondly, the, there's been a lot of research done about the speed and the travel of e-bikes. I can bring that, I didn't get that printed off, I didn't know I was going to be speaking, but most of the research shows that e-bike speeds, regardless of Class 1 or Class 2, is it falls below the speed limit of the bike trail, so below 15 miles an hour. And that's actual, the usage, in the same way that Jody mentioned, our cars go 150, 120 miles an hour, but we don't drive them at that. We don't create our roads, or we don't tell people they can't ride on roads because their car goes 120 miles an hour. We have speed limits that answer that, and other regulations, like the speed limit for the bike trail, and the traffic calming things that Sam talked about earlier. On our bike trail, we have a wind ear trail, and we have some blocked sightlines that certainly help with slowing down traffic. But even then, I know people complain about speed. Speed is relative, so if you're walking and someone goes by at 10 miles an hour and scares you, and you didn't know they were coming, of course, that's going to be a concern, in the same way that if you're in a car and someone blasts by you in a, you know, maybe not a residential area, but on Minnesota Avenue, that's going to concern you as well. But we often forget about the ones that are doing it right, the cyclists that are out on the trail, they're courteous of others, they have a bell, they like, they slow down when they pass people. Same as the motorists. Go stand out on Minnesota Avenue, you'll see that one guy do a U-turn in the middle of traffic. But there's hundreds of people that are doing it right, they're following the speed limits, but they, you don't remember them, because they're probably in a Honda or a Toyota or something that you see every day. So when looking at the class system of e-bikes, there's definitely room for Class 1 and Class 2 on our bike trails. And I would hope that we would position our ordinances in such that would encourage people looking for alternative methods of transportation to be able to use those freely, and hopefully maybe remove some cars from the road, and use our sidewalks, our roads, our multi-use trail for transportation, so that they can be healthy. And not create ordinances that force them into cars, or force them to not get outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Hi, I'm Dorinda Anderson, and I just want to say one thing with the throttle. To me, as a senior, the throttle helps me, in an intersection, get across faster, so that the people of their weight behind me don't get irritated because I'm too slow. And I think, I consider it a safety factor on the e-bike.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Any questions from the council? Any additional questions? Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, just to, without the throttle, then, how does the, there's still some kind of an electrical thing going on? I mean, the throttle is just to give it some thrust?
Yep. Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 are pedal assists. So what happens is, it has an on and off button. When you turn it on, when you pedal, you have to pedal, it kicks in a little assistance. The same thing with the throttle. It just helps you get a little bit quicker, especially when you're at a dead stop. So I have a Class 2 bicycle, and it's a pedal assist. If I have it off, it's a normal bicycle. I pedal. When I have it on, it's a normal bicycle. It's just assisting me. And sometimes as cyclists, we always like to say, have the wind at your back. I truly believe, being on an e-bike, it's like always having the wind at your back, because it's just always helping you a little. So the throttle just helps you kind of get started, and you are pedal assist on constantly with the e-bike. If you stop pedaling, then you just start slowing down like a normal bicycle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you for your time. I appreciate you being here. Is there a motion for the next item? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we go into executive session at this time to, in, for preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives, according to South Dakota Codified Law 125-24.
Second.
Thank you. There has been a motion to enter an executive session. Can I have a roll call, please?
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Delberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes. Thank you. We will be heading into executive session.